Everyone, it's seven o'clock. Planning Board members, it's seven o'clock, so I'm going to call the meeting to order. This is the May 16th, 2017 Planning Board meeting. And the first item on the agenda is the continuation of a public hearing from our previous meeting on May 2nd. And let me read that into the record. Good Hugh Hawkins Navy Yard LLC, 244 Sewell Road, Tax Map 241-36, Case 2017-13. And as I said, this is a continuation of a site plan review for development of the site and for new building. We left this open in order for the applicant to have a little bit more time to review the engineering comments on the application. So I know you've submitted something to us that we have in our packets, but why don't you go ahead and go through the highlights? And before you do that, I neglected to introduce all these folks, so I probably better do that. So down to the extreme left, Brad Harriman, who is the representative from the Board of Selectmen, Paul O'Brien, John Thurston, Peter Goodwin. That was to my right. To my left is Mike Carter and...
Straight here.
Yes, right. And Von Dugan, Matt Sullivan is Director of Planning and Development, and Lee Ann Keithley. Okay, so sorry about that. Go for it.
Me, I just turned my phone off. I thought it was. So, good evening. For the record, I'm Jim Reins from White Mountain Survey and Engineering, and here representing Good Hugh Hawkins Navy Yard LLC in their continuation of a hearing for their site plan review. At the last meeting, the public hearing had been closed. We had received the peer review from Ty and Bond and had just not had a chance to make changes and put them on the plans. And in Matt's plan review, he had recommended some changes to the plans, and so we incorporated both the Ty and Bond comments as well as Matt's revised plans that we then submitted last, a week ago today, I believe. We were waiting, we asked from, had some questions from Matt so that we could comment on all of them, and it turned out that, I guess, the reviewing engineer was on vacation last week, so once again, we're sort of at a spot where I haven't seen his response to my responses, but I think we've pretty well addressed them all, and I feel confident that if there's anything outstanding, we can easily take care of it. With regard to the Ty and Bond comments, their first one, they had asked for a lighter shading, and even though it wasn't a technical thing, we did do that. I haven't submitted final, final plans in hard copy, but I did bring some if you need me to put them up. But we simply made that change. We made changes to the snow storage on Sheet 2. We noted where the snow storage would be. We put a restriction that no snow storage, that snow could not be pushed into the lake, and that if there was an excess amount of snow, they would have to remove it and place it in a suitable location off-site. With regard to the snow storage over catch basins, I had discussed that at the hearing. Our position didn't change that that, you know, typically when water begins to run, it runs along the ground and it melts out where it's supposed to go and seeks its own level, so we felt that for that reason, we had made no changes. On the, we added, excuse me, Matt had a comment about placing, hatching on the road, and so we added that to Sheet 2. We showed a 20-foot wide crosshatch area for the forklift, and we added a note that that has to be, we put a pavement marking note and said that that needs to be coordinated and approved by both the Selectmen and the Public Works Director. We added, at Matt's request, a parking, the parking computations, which I shared verbally at the last hearing. We added a building showroom height note, and all of that was on Sheet 2. On Sheet 3, with regard to Ty and Bond's Comment 5, we added some spot grades to clarify and show the limits of the depression, which fell between contour intervals so that they could understand how that was going to happen and when those fill, the overflow is into those porous pavers. And so that's the situation there. On Sheet 5, which was the proposed drainage, we showed the contributing areas that are actually flowing to the porous pavers so that that could be better understood. Our drainage model didn't change, but we wanted Ty and Bond to be able to understand where the, what areas were being contributed to the porous pavers. And that sort of tied into their comment about the five-to-one ratio that's required with alteration of terrain. And all of our porous pavement areas satisfy the five-to-one ratio with one exception, and that was five and a half to one. And because we are not subject to the alteration of terrain standards, but the Wolfboro Stormwater Management, which requires that we make improvements on redeveloped sites to the maximum extent practical, practicable, or MEP, we felt that we had satisfied that criteria. On the lighting and landscaping, we did add a tree in the area where we had a shrub before, which was in this area, so that now all of the parking spaces are compliant. We noted that it would be in, it would be a containerized tree. So the, and I shared with Matt, there has been discussion with the actual underground storage tank people and about filling with this new situation, and they said, you know, maybe we're finding that though this tank is good for another 15 years, we're finding ethanol is causing these steel tanks to rust out sooner, so maybe you want to actually consider replacing that tank. So they're evaluating that, so though we've shown it as a containerized tree, if they do move it, then there'll actually be a planted tree there. We also, at the request of Ty and Bond, we showed where the disconnected drainage, and we did it with hatch patterns so that they could see where was receiving formal treatment, where was receiving informal treatment, so that that could be better understood. We added, though we had had inverts and rim elevations, we showed the length and the slope of the pipes to the plan as Ty and Bond had requested. We added, and under their Comment 13, we added the crushstone bedding underneath the drainage structures. We added a vegetation, a vegetated depression detail. And I responded to their Question 15 about, they were hoping to have us install a thicker filter medium under the porous pavement. And as the, as I mentioned in my reply to them, is the sand filter and the thickness that is typically required under porous pavement, not porous pavers, is about three feet thick. And a foot of that is sand filter. And then you like to have a permeable medium that that's going into below that. In our situation, we can't have that three-foot thickness, or we're going to be into the lake, and we need the structural stability, so what we did is the manufacturer's recommendation of the number two, or I mean, number eight aggregate, which is essentially a 3/8 inch wash stone, that provides some filtering as well as the structural support that these require. And that was based on the detail by the manufacturer, said that's what should be done when you use a, when the use is in an impermeable or a low-permeable substrata, which is our situation. We made some changes or some clarifications in the stormwater management in our narrative, and we provided them the web soil survey map that they had requested. And as I, their Comment 19, again, we depicted the permeable paver areas to show which ones were there. And the last comment, they'd asked, or not, wasn't the last comment, 20, they had asked for us to model the depressions into the drainage model. And so that really complicates the drainage model, and what all that we did is we modeled each of those separately to show how much those, how effective those depressions were, and then mathematically subtracted whatever their reduction was from the full subcatchment area. And we have seen through doing similar situations that if you go through the whole exercise of a complex model, that's a very close, you know, the results are almost identical. And so we felt that that was a reasonable approach. And the last, let's see. I had responded again about pervious pavers on Comment 23. We clarified the intent to have on the depressions was to overflow into the porous pavement, and the, they recommended some practices in the deep sun, some catch basins pervious pavers and depressions, and we had provided that information in the manual, the ONM Manual, Appendix C and D, and we weren't sure if perhaps they didn't get that before because that was included in the original submission. And similarly, that we had a reference to a Paragraph X, and I think that people thought that was a placeholder, but it was actually the Roman numeral in the stormwater management regulations of the site, the section that we cited, because I don't think those have yet been codified into the formal zoning. And I believe that that hits all of Ty and Bond's. Oh, we did, as Matt pointed out, in a senior moment, we didn't provide the construction cost estimate, so we did supply that. And I'm just looking through to make sure. I think that, I think I've addressed everything that both Matt and Ty and Bond had, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the board or the public has.
Okay. Questions? Go ahead, John.
So the substrata that you talked about before you get to the lake, you said it was, you said it was thin, and you couldn't put the deep thickness of crushstone.
Yeah, you couldn't have that three-foot thickness.
Yeah, and so you're going to add the 3/8 inch. How thick is that, that you're going to add that level?
Yeah, let me just look at the detail, John. So the, first, you've got a one and a half inch bedding. That's one and a half to two inches. That's just the bedding for the, then you've got the six inches of the number two stone. And then, excuse me, four inches of number 57 stone, which is an open graded stone, then six inches of number two stone, then an impermeable geotextile liner, and then six inches of DOT gravel. So you've got the...
16 inches.
Six, 10, 14, 20, about 22 inches.
To the lake.
About 22 inches from the surface. The lake isn't too much below that.
Okay, thank you. Second question, you talked about the steel tank. If you were to move that, relocate that tank, do you have a relocation area?
No, because they haven't done it, but I, they talked about either moving it, maybe putting it underneath this parking lot up here, or moving it over closer to this area. But in any instance, it would be further from the lake. But A, until they get pricing and stuff on this, they haven't decided when they're going to do it, and, but they think that this is, you know, inevitably, it's got to be done in 15 years, and now they're thinking maybe they are going to, their tank suppliers recommending that they might do it sooner.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Matt, do you, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Two questions. Could you address the lighting issue on the incorrect placement of ceiling mounted lights?
Oh, I had a, I had one, yeah. I showed one internal to here, and I think that's what Matt's comment was, that that needs to be, it's inside the building.
Yeah.
So it just needs to be removed from the plan.
Okay. And then retaining wall height, is there any possibility that that's going to be higher than four feet, requiring a variance?
I sincerely doubt it.
Good.
I really don't think so, because there's bed, there's bowl-faced ledge all along here. So my suspicion is the maximum height of what we've shown for retaining walls varies from six to eight feet, and with that exposed ledge, my guess is that, you know, we're going to be into ledge very quickly.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess I have nothing to add, then.
Well, I've got two questions for you.
Well, I have one comment quickly. I did have an opportunity to speak to Ty and Bond for about two minutes when they received the revised plans. They were relatively comfortable with the adjustments to the plans, but they do want to provide a final comment on it, so you'll see that in the event that the board seeks a conditional approval, I do have a condition in there for a final favorable review by Ty and Bond. But again, I think they agreed with White Mountain's methodology and approach to their initial comments.
Okay. Anything else you want to?
Oh, I think Jim covered it pretty well, and then Mike took my only other pending items. The only thing I did want to quickly address, though, is relative to the signage comment that I had in here, I just wanted to clarify that. There's non-conforming signage, obviously, on the site right now. There'd be no expansion of that non-conforming signage allowed per the zoning ordinance, so in the event that, when you come in for a sign permit, the planning board needs to either approach this issue and identify a standard for the shorefront residential district, or you be held to the standard of the existing signage.
Or they could come before the...
Or go for a variance.
Go to the...
Or seek a variance. Or seek a variance.
Which probably might be the easiest way to go. One question for the planner. The Sewell Road pavement marking note, that should be a condition of approval or not?
I don't think it should be a condition of approval. I think it should be shown on the plan, the intent should be shown, but as it's been indicated, I think, you know, the jurisdiction is really that of the Board of Selectmen or the Public Works Director, and as a result, I don't think it's appropriate to have it as a condition of approval.
We have shown it on the plans as well, just...
I noticed that.
Okay.
Okay. And you don't think it's an appropriate condition? It's on the plans, it's just sort of a reminder.
I second what Kathy feels, I think it should be a condition.
It's fine.
Yeah, I was just...
Sure, sure, yeah.
Just think that it might be easier if it was a condition of approval, since it was something that's been offered, it's on the plans, and then as people go through the checklist of...
My only concern, though, is that if the Board of Selectmen deny the request, then the approval is vacated, and I just don't know if that's a position the planning board wants to...
Right. Well, we don't necessarily have to word it that way, just say that if the Board of Selectmen approves.
Okay.
Approves it, that it would address safety issues.
Yeah, so the issue is, it's on the plan, they volunteered to do this, I wouldn't make it a condition of approval.
Right.
I'd make it a, hey, Selectmen, do you want them to do it? They volunteered to do it, however you word that.
Right.
Yeah.
And if they say no, fine. If they say yes, fine.
Yeah, yeah.
But it doesn't affect the overall implementation of the plan. Is that...
Yes, that's...
Except that it's on the plan itself. If they build not, if they don't build the plan, then...
They just have, they just have to get an eraser and take it off, but we're just simply saying...
No, they can't do that. Post facto, they can't make...
Yeah, you could do crosshatching of the crossing area, subject to Board of Selectmen approval. It'd be that simple. And if it doesn't get approved, then the approval isn't vacated.
It doesn't mitigate their ability to proceed.
No, if you put "subject to" the board's approval, I think it doesn't hold them to that approval.
It's not a requirement, is it? A safety requirement, it's a voluntary gesture on your part.
Element, I think.
And we just have to be careful how that's worded.
Yes. Yeah, right. Okay, anything else?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, this is a public hearing today. Any member of the public want to comment on this application? Okay. Okay. Planning Board members, any other questions? Hey, Matt, do you have some suggested conditions?
Do, let me just jot down this condition, though, quickly.
And you're just going to acknowledge that we're going to put in 11 plans, right?
Yes. I am going to read the dates quickly, though, because there are a couple different dates.
Okay.
They weren't all amended as of this most recent set, so...
Well, if you have some suggested conditions for, if we were to approve this, that would be great.
Sure. So, condition number one, the following plans is amended to the day of this approval or incorporated to the approval. The existing conditions plan, Revised 5917, proposed development site plan, Revised 5917, Plan 3, proposed grading plan, 5917, existing conditions range plan, 5917, proposed conditions range plan, 5917, proposed landscaping and lighting plan, 5917, proposed stormwater management and erosion control plan, 5917, proposed erosion control plan, March 24th, 2017, proposed site work and drainage details, 5917, proposed driveway and parking details, March 24th, 2017, proposed utility details, March 24th, 2017. Item 2, the applicant shall enter into a construction observation agreement with the town's consulting engineer for site work. The cost shall be borne by the applicant. The applicant shall be responsible for payment of all recording fees. Financial security based on the total cost of site improvements plus 10% should be provided. Financial security shall be reviewed by the town or their designee at the expense of the applicant. All the documentation submitted in the application package by the applicant and any requirements imposed by other agencies are part of this approval unless otherwise updated, revised, clarified in some manner, or superseded in full or in part. In the case of conflicting information between documents, the most recent documentation in this notice herein shall be generally determining. Final favorable review by Ty and Bond of revised drainage and stormwater management plans and reports. Proceed of all federal, state, and local permits, including but not limited to Town of Wolfboro driveway permit, HDES shoreline permit, HDES wetlands bureau permit, Town of Wolfboro shoreline permit, and all conditions attached thereto are hereby incorporated to this approval. A letter of ADA compliance shall be prepared by the applicant or their agent. An as-built plan to be provided by the town, provided to the Town of Wolfboro following project completion, and crosshatching to be applied to Sewell Road for the forklift crossing, subject to approval by the Board of Selectmen.
Can I amend that? To be submitted for review by the Public Works Director and the Board of Selectmen. That way, if they don't like it, it doesn't vacate this approval. But it does indicate that this board would like that part of Sheet 2 submitted to the PWD and the Board of Selectmen for their review, and hopefully their approval.
Could you read the condition in full as you have it?
Sewell Road pavement marking as per note on Sheet 2 of the plan, set to be submitted for review by the Public Works Director and the Board of Selectmen.
Sounds good.
All right?
Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay.
That would be number 10.
Okay. Applicants, any issues with the conditions?
No, I, the, my only comment is, you know, with Ty and Bond and a, if it's a final, sometimes engineers come down and they say, oh, you know, I think it should be done this way, but I think it should be done this way. I'm stamping it, is it wrong? Are you stamping it? And I just, when I, when I see stuff that has to be approved sort of by them, I guess I, you know, I always like it when it's the board's discretion so that you can hear both sides, and it's not a he said, she said. So I don't know if there's any other way to word that, but...
I think the alternative is to continue this until we receive comments back from them, and I don't know if that's a...
No, this is the second time here.
Right, right.
Well, no, and I'm saying, that's why I'm including the condition, because I think the best way to move this forward is to have this, I just don't want to not give Ty and Bond an opportunity at all to provide final comments, but again, based on the conversations I've had with them, there will be no issues. And many of their comments were either aesthetic or taste-based, and then beyond that, it was design-based, or it was really just preferential engineering, essentially. At least that was my take home from that, so...
Jim, are you concerned that this, that Ty and Bond has a final approval over your plan?
Yeah, I guess, Ty and Bond submitted their comments, the board had the opportunity to review them, we submitted our response. I think, I feel like the board had an opportunity to review them. So the board is the one that makes a decision on whether we're approving this or not.
Right.
With this condition, Ty and Bond is making it, is making the decision whether this is approved or not. And I, and I guess my question to the board is, are you, and I don't have any problem with Ty and Bond, trust me, I get along with them. I just, the way it's written, I just want, you know, the board has heard both, you've heard, you've read my responses, I presume, I think that we've addressed them. And whether they come back with, you know, another taste comment, or, you know, if they don't have a, oh gee, we wish you would do this, does that mean that this approval, you know?
Well, the way it's written, it does seem, seem...
Why don't we just omit the word favorable?
Yes, that's what I was thinking.
Okay.
Just a final review.
Final review by Ty and Bond?
Final review, which means they just haven't had a chance to...
Okay, that's fine.
So they just look at it, and if there's something really awful, which is not likely...
Right, I mean, if there's something gross, I'm not going to...
They will sit down.
I'm going to want to correct it if they find something gross, because I don't want to be responsible.
Matt, are you okay removing the word favorable?
Yeah, I mean, my only concern there is not actually this application, but I think it's important to set precedent that the board may not have the capacity or expertise to evaluate whether his response is correct. So, I mean, I'm just saying from a precedent perspective, but in this case, I think that's an appropriate condition, as amended.
I think, I understand your precedent, but I think in this case, I mean, if Ty and Bond has a problem, we're going to know about it. We're close enough as a little team that we'd find out. I mean, he'd probably come and do a self-confession and say, we had an issue here. I also agree with your point, but I would eliminate the word favorable and just say final review of Ty and Bond.
Yes.
That's what, that's what we're proposing.
Yeah.
And given the fact that our planner has said that the differences, if any, between you and Ty and Bond are minuscule, and he expects a favorable review by Ty and Bond, gives us a lot of confidence that removing the word favorable won't do any injustice to the process.
Yeah, I, I mean, like I said, I feel comfortable, it's just it's the way it's worded, I would...
Okay, are you more comfortable with...
Yeah, with the final review, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, this application, I think it's a, it was well done, and it's going to organize the site in a way that it probably is needed to be done in quite some time, and certainly is addressing... needed to be done in, in quite some time, and certainly is addressing safety issues. And I, I think they've taken the neighborhood into concern, into account as they've developed this plan, so. Somebody interested in making a motion?
Go ahead, Julie.
I make a motion. We approve the Good Hugh and Hawkins Navy Yard application, Case Number 2017-13, with conditions stated.
Tax map.
Okay.
Tax map, 241036.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, all in favor of this application, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extentions? Okay, thank, thank you very much, and, and thanks for coming back, and good, good luck.